I'm Otto Frizzell, the town clerk, and I'd like to welcome you to tonight's inauguration ceremony. We'll witness the oath of offices for the mayor, the town council, and the school committee. I'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance and introduce Lachlan Moriarty, who will lead us. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would now like to introduce Jillian Gray, who will be performing the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Over the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave over the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wonderful job, Jillian. I would now like to introduce Bishop William D. Byrne to deliver the invocation.
Good evening. Just a point of clarification, it was said that my official title is, of course, the Bishop of Springfield. That's just where the cathedral lies. I am the bishop of Western Massachusetts in Toto, so I'm as much the bishop, former mayor, of West Springfield as I am Springfield. So, I'm all yours, you're all mine. Thank God for that, okay? When President George Washington was leaving his service as our first president, he wrote that nations and individuals are under the moral government of an infinitely wise and just providence. So it is in this spirit that we invoke our wise and just God. God of love and peace, we thank you for the many gifts that you have given us. In a special way, we thank you for the gift of our nation and the special gift of democracy. Bless all in public service. May they know the reward of their building the common good. We pray that you work through the decisions and actions of all our leaders. In one special way, we invoke your blessing upon our mayor, William Reichelt, to the city council and to the school committee of West Springfield and all who work in this administration. May their words and actions be inspired by your spirit so that by their governance, this city and her citizens may flourish in equality, justice, and peace. Amen.
I'd now like to introduce the members of the school committee, who will be sworn in first tonight. Please rise after I call your names. Diana Coin. Nancy Farrell. William Garvey. Kira Thompson. Committee members Kathy Levers and Colleen Marcus could not be with us tonight. Please raise your right hands and repeat back to me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will uphold and support the constitutions thereof. I do further swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon me as a school committee member to the best of my abilities and understanding so help me God. Congratulations. Now I'd like to introduce the members of the West Springfield Town Council. Please rise as I call your names. Brian Clune. Anthony DeCefano. Michael Eager. Michael Laflamme. Shawn Powers. Jamie Smith. And Edward Sullivan. Councilors Brian Clune and Dan O'Brien could not be with us tonight. I'm sorry. Please raise your right hands and repeat back to me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will uphold and support the constitutions thereof. I do further swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon me as a town councillor for the town of West Springfield to the best of my ability and understanding so help me God. Congratulations. Now I'd like to call forward Mayor Reichelt and his family for the mayor's oath. Raise your right hand. Repeat back to me. I state your name.
I, William Reichelt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will bear true faith and allegiance
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the United States of America
The United States of America.
and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
and will uphold and support
and will uphold and support.
the constitutions thereof.
the constitutions thereof.
I do further swear
I do further swear.
I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially.
discharge and perform
discharge and perform.
all of the duties
all of the duties.
incumbent upon me
incumbent upon me.
as mayor of West Springfield
as a mayor of West Springfield.
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
and understanding
and understanding.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. A special thank you to Bishop Byrne, as well as our staff and volunteers for their time tonight. Thank you also to Jillian Gray and Lachlan Moriarty, two young leaders with bright futures who are thankfully still ways away from running against me for mayor. Congratulations also to our new council and school committee. I look forward to working with you both over the next two years. I hope the challenges we face in the next two years will not be ones of having to react to outside and unforeseen crises, but rather ones where we create new opportunities. In the face of the global health pandemic, it is an understatement that the last two years have been an unprecedented challenge for our region and nation. However, in West Springfield, we have used these challenges to innovate and adapt to meet the needs of the community in ways we had not previously. Over the past six years, my administration has focused on analyzing assets of our community, looking for ways to make them more relevant and resilient, to not always use them in the same way controlled by tradition, but rather to look at them in new ways through new eyes of a new generation. With the regional stimulus opportunities created by our federal government through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, we're on the precipice of a turning point in our nation, similar to what the New Deal provided the country in the 20th century in the wake of the Great Depression. Seizing this moment, my administration intends to set an agenda not just for the next four years, but one that will be relevant into the next century. My plan, stewardship and 21st century vision for the next millennium, will focus on creating new institutions, ways of doing things, continuing to reimagine public services, infrastructure and capital improvements that will continue to make West Springfield a community that is desirable to raise a family, own a business, and age with dignity. Capitalizing on the innovations implemented during the pandemic, we intend to continue these efforts through eight pillars representing the remaining eight decades of this century to support our vision for a bright future. Climate resiliency, revitalization of neighborhood business hubs, infrastructure upgrades and improvements, investments in facilities focused on human services, needs of our residents, diversity, equity, and inclusion, innovation in government, expansion of social emotional programs in education, and legislative modernizations building on initiatives currently in progress. As to climate resiliency, we'll continue our improvements in infrastructure and expand those initiatives to focus on our stormwater network, repairs to our levee and culvert systems, and upgrades to our flood control stations. The town will also further invest in energy use reduction, energy efficiency improvements, explore electric fleet turnover, and expansion of our urban forestry initiatives. We'll focus on the return to vibrancy and economic opportunity in revitalizing our neighborhood business hubs, such as the Central Business District, our downtown, the Westfield Street Corridor, and the Main and Union Street businesses, while continuing to support growth along Riverdale Memorial. To facilitate access to these hubs, the community will continue its efforts to improve the pedestrian and bicycle safety, including connectivity through additional public transportation offerings, expansion of community use areas, and completion of the town's existing riverwalk and future connection of the Connecticut River Walk and Bike Way in Springfield, as well as the Columbia River Greenway Rail Trail in Westfield. All these improvements are intended to continue economic growth and development by attracting new businesses to these hubs. This year, we'll also begin offering high-speed broadband service to our residents through a partnership with Whip City Fiber. This utility rollout will expand across the entire community over the next five years to provide all residents with alternative broadband service. Other human-focused capital improvements being pursued include renovation of our senior center, construction of a new police station and new public works yard, additions to our classrooms and other learning space at several schools, improvements to Mitten Lake Park, and additional athletic facilities. With regard to education, we'll continue our efforts in expanding students' social emotional learning programs to address the residual and lasting effects that the pandemic has had on our youngest generation. As the local community with the highest per capita refugee resettlement population, we'll continue to enhance efforts to include our incredibly diverse population in all levels of local government to innovate and expand the ways in which we function and provide services to our citizens. We'll continue to improve diversity, equity, inclusion efforts, including recruiting and retaining a more diverse workforce in appointed boards and committees. Finally, my administration has been working on the legislative package that we presented to the council later this year, which is focused on updating existing regulatory schemes such as our general and zoning ordinances to meet the needs of the 21st century with flexibility to integrate innovation without losing the character of our community. While this has been a challenging time, it's also presented us with an ability to innovate and improve government as never before. We intend to capitalize on this opportunity to meet the maximum extent possible with an eye towards the next century of growth and transformation. I am very much looking forward to the next four years as your mayor. I see a promising future for Westside and hope to spend the rest of the decade making this community the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Reichelt. That concludes the inauguration program for this evening. We'll have a short break, and then the town council and school committees will have their reorganizational meetings beginning at 6:30. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Happy New Year.
Is he the senior member? Scared.
Who's here?
Clover.
Turn screen, you're live.
Good evening. I would now call the regular town council meeting of January 3rd, 2022 to order at 6:30 PM. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and videotaped. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please identify yourself for the audience. Will the town clerk please take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Clune.
Here.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
Counselor Griffin. Counselor LaFlam.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Here.
I will now open the floor for nominations of town council president. Counselor Powers.
I'll nominate Edward Sullivan.
Second. Go to a vote. Discussion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote.
Counselor Clune.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor LaFlam.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Six and... Six, seven in favor, zero opposed.
President Sullivan. I will now open the floor to nominations for town council vice president. Counselor DiStefano.
Move to nominate Brian Clune, vice president.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote.
Counsel... Excuse me, Counselor Clune.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor LaFlam.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
That is seven to zero, no opposition.
So how are we doing the seating assignment? Otto.
So you two can step forward with me, and then the other counselors will draw their lots.
Okay.
Do you want to go one, two, or together?
Let's go together.
Okay. Please raise your right hands. Repeat back to me. I state your name.
I, Edward Sullivan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
As president and vice president.
As president.
The vice president. The West Springfield Town Council.
The West Springfield Town Council.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now if you shuffle the seating order, so president is going to take the fifth position.
Which votes is there?
Yes.
Everybody in their seats? Okay. So, thank you, everyone, for your confidence in me, I appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll have a good... We'll have a great two years, not a good two years, a great two years. So next up is... Everybody should have in front of them the town council proposed meeting calendar for 2022. Does anybody need a copy? Everybody got one? So what I'd like to do is move to adopt by resolution, setting the 2022 town council meeting calendar as is presented in front of you.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the resolution?
Mr. President.
Counselor Powers.
I can't remember, but last year, did we run into some issues with the biggie? Having the double meetings? Did we talk about having one in September? Was that...
There was some sidebars about it, but we can certainly change it as the time gets close. Okay. We can... We don't necessarily have... Just because it's by resolution, that allows us to move things around easier or eliminate something.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor LaFlam.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, so it's unanimous, seven in favor, zero opposed. That's pretty much our agenda, but I do have a couple items I want to mention. Is I encourage everybody, especially new counselors if you don't have it, to secure a copy of the town council rules, which lays out a lot of procedures and protocol. And we have two other items. In the absence of our beloved former counselor, George Kelly, we do have to sign up for the St. Patrick's Day Parade if we want to march as a group, and we have to have that returned by the next meeting. So anybody who's interested, please let me know. Put the names down, and we'll either sign up or not. And if the mayor's still here, I don't know if he is, oh, he's probably at school committee, we'll try to find out where we are in the lineup, which is always critical to our attendance. And also, the... Otto will probably revisit and send out the information for the annual MMA meeting, especially for new counselors who might be interested in attending. It's the largest one of the year, and they have some good seminars and information and sidebars and things like that that I'm sure you might find interesting. So we'll send that back out, because we have to get that done by the end of the week for those who might be interested in attending. So any other business come before the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Moved and seconded by Vice President Clune. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, counselors. See you at the next meeting. Oh, oh. I was remiss, one other thing. If you have interest in a particular committee, subcommittee, please let me know before I make assignments if you want to serve on whether it's budget ordinance or, you know, HR, you know, traffic and safety. So just let me know. I know this is after the meeting, but just send me along any interest you might have. All right, thank you.